We don't want any crazy people to join. Now, we don't want to push anybody out. So, we're doing it on the behalf of the...
I see it's a thousand degrees in here.
We're doing it on the behalf of the...
It's cooler than it was.
I'm going to be bordering on inappropriate dress pretty soon.
So, if you feel smart, my head is on something completely different. I don't want you to think that I don't think it's important. I just as well. I do think it's a person by person, right? Because everyone's got the right to say what they want, right? We don't have speech. But where's that line drawn?
There is a line where you can't be direct. I think that there's just a way of flirting.
It's a technique.
Me too, sister. Hey, listen, I wanted to, you know, about Charlie. I know you've been praying for some me.
Dave, come on.
I've been arguing about it all morning. So?
I just wanted to know if there's any...
So?
No, babe.
But these things, you know, you say, well, it's hard.
And I hear saying that some of the nonprofits that specialize in domestic violence and mental health, like they have stepped up and things are happening today to support students and people. Now, whether that's being communicated well enough or across enough media, I think that raises a bigger question. Is the media covering everything? Will we have a media in our area?
Oh, that would be a dream and trying for it is going to explode if you're on ABC Watch.
I get jealous of them on Facebook. Friends with Tuscula, they always do years like that. Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes to... It is in the day.
Right.
President.
Mr. Trello.
President.
Mr. Rushing.
Here.
Mr. Van Damas, Chairperson Tomasco.
Here. This time we have citizens wishing to address the board. This is a public meeting. We do have a component for citizens. We have three citizens. We'll have, Vicki was first in line here, so Vicki Blackburn, come on up. Republicans for Democracy.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm glad that we had the moment of silence for Charlie Kerr. It's horrific. Absolutely horrific. And so we have an opportunity now to decide what we individually are going to do, right? Dear friend asked me, you know, he said, you know, you come to these meetings and you say people should get along. What does that mean? Okay, so I can say without notes because I'm, yeah, my human self doesn't have any answers. I can say for me it means realizing that we have a line in the sand right now. And we have what's perceived as this side and this side. And really, potentially, in my opinion, it's not a great number of people there. And that we can come together to get the best idea. It doesn't have to be all or nothing. I think that with the line in the sand, we each have an opportunity to exercise moral courage. And what does moral courage look like? Some people would say, I follow the Bible and the Bible says this. And I would have thoughts in my mind when I hear that. My thoughts are, my God says love your neighbor and stay safe. My God says, you know, love your enemies. My God says all of these things about non-judgment. So let's have that conversation. I would really welcome that conversation about our interpretation of the Bible. That's the first thing that we could do. And we could meet at a coffee shop. We could be at the library. But I'm putting the invitation out there that I'm open if you are. And I think it's a conversation that would help us to listen to each other and not to think we have the right answer. I can tell you, I don't have the right answer to anything, except I choose to stand in love and peace. And some people on either side of the discussion criticize me for that because they think it's not a strong position. And I would say, in my, in my understanding of Jesus, I believe that that's what Jesus would call us to do in these times. And I did put on my note Republicans for Democracy because there is a critical mass of Republicans that don't align with the far extreme. And so considering that, I'm offering again to have the conversation with anybody that will have it with me. You can text me, call me, or email me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. May I reflect? We now have Mr. Van Damas also present at the meeting. The clerk would make note of that, please. This next item, we have two people want to talk about District Five candidate Angela De Frain.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. You, you guys have a lot to look through with these candidates. I just want to kind of mention that, you know, personally for me, I do not think that politicians should become lobbyists. I also don't think lobbyists should be allowed back into the public arena. So there is somebody I believe that you guys are looking at today that, that would be that person. I, I also think that it's really important to know what people you are looking at that have actually been involved without being paid to be here. So have they been coming to the meetings? Have they been involved in the community? Or are they just jumping forward now when there's a possible paid position to be had? So that's just something I, I hope you guys look at while you're going through your list of individuals that have applied for this position. It's, I think it's just really important to me, as well as other people in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Michael Grover, candidates.
My name is Michael Grover. I'm Trina Township, Michigan. And I have sat on many boards in my lifetime. And I understand this unique opportunity that you guys have today. I also understand that there is a lot of pressure to maintain the integrity of the board. You all want someone like-minded, someone that fits in, someone who is not going to rock the boat. Personally, I like when the boat rocks. I have an amazing person of integrity for you. I am proud to state my strong support for candidate Warren Head for District Five County Commissioner. Warren's 51 years of service as a police officer speaks volumes about his dedication to our country, our state, and especially St. Clair County. He is a man of integrity, deeply respected and loved in the community. And he has consistently put others before himself. I firmly believe Warren Head is exactly the kind of leader we need representing us. I encourage everyone to support him and I, and to cast your vote for Warren Head for District Five County Commissioner. Together you can help put someone in office who truly cares about the people he serves. Thank you.
Thank you. This last one is Tracy Bergy regarding board decisions.
Hello. I'm Tracy Bergy. I am from Marysville, Michigan. I am a frequent flyer, but I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to watch you great people come together and put together something that to me can leave quite a legacy for the people of St. Clair County. You have a lot of names in front of you and a lot of people I'm sure would love to come into this and, and help. And I agree with, we want people that are like-minded, people that want to move the ship in the same direction, or at least represent something that's very good for our county. I, I watch what you all are doing and it's work. And it's really hard when I see, you know, I, I would like to see someone step up that can do this job, that can work for the people and have the people's interest at heart and not have, you know, monetary things in the background like this could go forward or this could go forward. We are coming into times that that 26-mile expansion, that is not dead. We might think that we have won that, but I keep reading that Macomb is trying to bring that forward and they're going to push their agenda on us. And I believe the people have spoken and they said they don't want to do that. I am hoping and praying, and I'm praying for you all, that whoever you bring in as this, for District Five, that you all have that same like-mindedness. We are not a people that are anti-growth like they labeled us. We are not ignorant people. We are not people who don't understand how it is. But we need someone that comes in here and that can work with everyone and that we can get people. I, I would love to see a board that votes unanimously just for the people. And I, I don't care if you are a Republican or a Democrat. I want you people to work for the people of St. Clair County and our children. What, what are we going to leave for our kids? That's why I come up here and I do this. I do this because I have two little girls that matter to me, like you all have your own family. They matter to us. And that is why we do what we do. And I think that you all get paid to do this, but I know you're not bringing in the huge dollars. And I appreciate it because it's truly an act of service and an act of love for your county. Because nobody's going to get rich on that money that y'all are making. So I get it. And I know it's a lot of time. But I hope that you guys will go to prayer and seriously think about where you want to be with our county. And then I have to put in a shameless plug because I could not get up here and not say that my heart is really with Warren Head. He put his name in to run for this appointment. And I think he's a man of the people. He wants to work for the people. He's a wonderful public servant. He's a man of faith. He's this Christian man that just wants to work for us. So I hope that you would, you know, preferably consider him because I think that that could be a winning team. Wouldn't it be awesome for us all to be on the same team? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bergy. Any other citizens wishing to be heard that have not spoken? Being none, we have one item on new business, item 5A, receive and review District Five candidate information. Carrie, you want to kick that off as our administrator?
Sure. So in front of you today, you have the 16 applications that you have received. So today, we want to define what process the board would like to use to go forward, set some dates to meet whatever milestones that you want regarding interviews and appointments and how you would like to do that. Also at your place is some information regarding process, incompatible offices. You'll see some of the candidates may hold positions elsewhere. So it shows the different offices that you can hold together and the ones that you cannot.
Okay. So the process is not new. We've had people who've passed away as board members, people who have been here and left as board members. There's some discussion about how to proceed. We have 15 candidates. And I believe you have a suggestion on some of the past practice, Carrie. I mean, we've talked a little bit about it. I've been around when Denny Kern passed away. I left the board at one time. There was an appointment process there that I was familiar with. So what is your suggestion? How would you see this going forward, given past practice and, and as a practical, fair way to address these 15 people that have now honorably applied for this position? How would you suggest we, we proceed with the vote or the narrowing of the vote or so forth?
In, in the past, when the board has received this number of applications, they have gone through a process to review them and then narrow them down, or the board would decide a number of candidates that they wanted to interview.
One of the examples, I spoke to Carrie Angie, and I didn't realize that, but a time ago, she was one of six people that applied for a vacancy, didn't make the second cut. And how, and she asked me, how did that, and I was on the board at the time, but so how did that process work? How did you make that cut? I didn't know. Do you know how that cut was made?
I, I don't know how the board determined at that time the number of individuals that they wanted to interview. I believe they reviewed the applicants and they determined amongst themselves how many that they wanted to interview.
Was that done at a, I hope that was done at a open meeting.
I believe, yes, it was.
Okay, amongst themselves, so.
I was not involved in that.
So I guess that's the lawyer side of me. But I guess I'd open it up to any commissioner. What are the commissioners' thoughts on how you would like to proceed? I've got some thoughts, but you know, Robert's Rule says the board chair is supposed to be impartial. I have difficulty sometimes achieving that impartiality. I want to vote the board to talk about how they'd like to proceed, given the comments of our administrator and some of the historical precedent here. So I guess, Carrie, you want to start off? Can you tell us a little bit how you feel? Do you want to go down the local row or just see who wants to say something?
I think we definitely need to determine a process whereby the field can be narrowed. I don't think we would have any possibility of fulfilling our statutory duty if six of us were to embark on voting on 16 candidates. So I would advocate for a process by which we could narrow the field and select interviewees and schedule those next week and then schedule a final vote toward the end of next week. That would be my proposition.
Is there anybody that disagrees with that? I tend to agree with that. Is there anyone here that disagrees? Dave?
Well, I got a few things, but.
Well, just, just, just on that point, on narrowing the field, do you think we should narrow the field or no?
I was getting there.
Well, when you say I got other things as well, I get nervous. But go ahead.
You're holding up progress. I was actually here when I believe there was four applicants when you put your name in the hat. And I think we narrowed it down to two. And that was Georgia Baldwin got the position on a majority of the vote. So somehow, if we could get down to two, I think that would be important. If we start off with 16, I definitely want to have interviews, at least for myself, to get a feel because some of these people I know and I've talked to, some of them I haven't a clue. Without an interview, I really can't consider them. And being here today, that gives, the people that are here today, you get a plus in my book for showing up today because that's a very important position. So I think that we should potentially, however we get there, go to eight, four, and then two, however we can get there.
Lisa, what do you think? Any thoughts? I mean, do you agree with to narrow down? I guess is the first thing.
We, we definitely need to narrow down, but we've just been given these today. So.
You'd like some time?
Yeah.
What do you think, Joy? You agree to narrow down and take some time or do you want to?
Yeah, it'd be nice to go through what we received today and then narrow it down.
Dave's, man, a few words, but he's nodding. So that'll, I'll take that as. What's that?
I wasn't finished with you.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, I just want to get to one thing. So then go ahead. Any other, any other thoughts? We're going to narrow it down. So Joy, go ahead. I didn't mean to step on. All right. Sorry about that. So, so we're going to narrow it down. So then the process, you know, my thoughts on it is, you know, like Lisa said, we just got these, each one of these has a phone number. And there are a number of people that I know and a number I don't know. My intention would be to get some time. And I would call every one of them myself and just talk to them a little bit, you know, about their interests. And then that would help me narrow it down. Plus, in the community, I tend to talk to people. I'd call people I don't know and say, well, you know this fellow or that woman or whatever. That helps me as well. And I can't do that today. Carrie Hepic suggested we would take a recess and try to narrow it down today.
No, I did not say that. I, I said we have forms ready if the board chose to do that. If you would like, I, I could suggest a process. I know there's a lot of scheduling conflicts with commissioners out of town. So there's very few dates and opportunities for you to select your candidates. That does need to be done at a public meeting. And the next available date that all the commissioners are available is not until next Thursday. And we are up on a time limit. So if you would like to schedule a meeting next Thursday, I would suggest bringing in all 16 candidates, allowing each 16 candidates, couple minutes to speak, introduce themselves, then do a narrowing process. And then from that, select those that you want to interview that day.
That's also the day of our full board?
Correct.
So we would be looking to perhaps fill that seat at that board meeting?
Or, or you could set a, a meeting day after that. But I know there was also scheduling conflicts for the prior week with Commissioner Van Damas. But you do have until the 28th to fill this, or it will have to go to a special election.
So would you suggest we extend the time of the meeting a little earlier to accommodate that process, like a five o'clock start rather than six? Or do you think and handle it during the board meeting?
That's your choice. I would recommend doing the candidates as a special meeting all on its own because at your regular board meeting, we tend to have significant public comment on other issues. So you may not be able to get started with the candidates till quite a bit later.
How much time do you think it'll take to go through 15 people? Two minutes? That's?
16 candidates.
16 candidates, two minutes. So what do you think? An hour? Would be sufficient or?
At least, yes.
Well, how, is the board members want to chime in? Do you think we should start at four, start at five? I'm thinking we'll start before the regular meeting. We can start at four and go through that process, have two hours, and then start our regular meeting. Or Carrie, or anybody want to chime in?
I know that we went through some scheduling conflicts and talked about that at our last meeting. I see here in my phone, however, I blocked off time on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday afternoons. And I can't quite recall if people were unavailable on Tuesday and Wednesday. But I like Carrie's suggestion of putting it on a different day, considering that we have a full agenda on that Thursday, as well as, you know, time for public comment on the agenda items as well. I feel like this needs to be segregated out from a regular meeting.
Does that sound, does everyone, does that sound good to everyone? Or does anyone have a contrary opinion? I'm open to anything.
It was, it was me that had the conflicts that I'm only available until, on Thursday. So once Thursday and Friday, I'm available. And then going into the following week, Commissioner Rushing has golf and Commissioner Van Damas is out of town Monday, Tuesday. Those were the conflicts. So.
So could we plan it on Friday? Are people available on Friday, the 19th?
I am. Any, anybody have a conflict on Friday?
Gone.
Dave's gone.
Leave Thursday night after the meeting.
So where does that leave us, do you think, Carrie? I mean, I'd like your suggestion, but how do we plug that in, do you think? I mean, I was thinking that the administrator's saying we, they're here Thursday anyway, just started at like four, for an hour and a half, and that'll take care of that. We're all here anyway. That's why I think Carrie suggested.
Sort of. It looks like we don't have much of a choice there. Ideally, we could have its own day, but coordinating seven schedules is difficult.
Well, I suppose too, if we did it at four o'clock on that Thursday, and we got the narrowing down process, we could vote during the full board or something. You've got more time to think about it or more discussion, I suppose. But I think in an hour and a half, it'll give me time to look at these folks. And like you say, some I, half I knew, half I didn't, familiarize myself with all these candidates and, you know, give it a fair assessment. That's what everyone wants to do. So that, that would accommodate that need for me. And then narrow it down and vote in that two-hour window. I think we could do it. Is anyone, Dave?
Many things. In regards to a special meeting, I think that the meeting, see if the format would be corrected. Be for the people that want to fill the position. Those are the only one that will be addressing the board. There'll be no comments because that's the two appointed commissioners.
All public meetings, all public meetings, I think you have to have a public comment portion under the open.
Right. Well, I'd say let them speak first, get the 16 for two minutes, and then have our comments to them from there.
What, what Robert's Rule does allow for, if you're going to have a meeting, let's say 40 people show up and want to take three minutes, okay? You can't pigeonhole time into like half an hour total and cut people off. But what the case law and what administrative rules and what the Robert's Rules tell us is you can take the number of people and in the time that you're going to say allow an hour and to get, make sure everyone gets a minute or two minutes. I don't think we'll have that problem. People can also communicate. Now we have the list. We get emails all the time on all kinds of issues. So I'm sure people can find their way to communicate with us outside the meeting. That gives them time to react to the letter and, and our interest and all that, too. So I don't think anyone would come in and abuse that, that piece of it. So, so is that?
I would disagree with that because you see what's been happening with the decisions that's been coming before us, all the comments in regards to the clinics. There have been over seven and a half hours tied up at the advisory, and I believe close to six hours tied up at our meeting.
Well, and that's my point on that was, you know, had that occurred and I was the chair, I probably would have looked at that and said, we have, we have 20 people that want three minutes apiece. We're all going to do an hour and a half. It's going to go from three minutes to one minute, just so you can get your regular business done, not to preclude people. So I don't know how we do, I think we have to have a public comment. Carrie, do you agree with that or?
Yes. Under Open Meetings Act, all open meetings must have public comment.
So we'll just, we'll just have a public comment, see who shows up? We had some of the concerns the last meeting, that there was some, somebody on Facebook, whatever, was going to load the meeting and have 40 people show up and, you know, so we couldn't have a meeting. Well, six people showed up and we took care of it in the normal business. So I'm hopeful maybe that'll happen again. And if not, we'll deal with it at that time.
So Carrie, with that, we just opened the meeting. We'll have our normal pledge of allegiance roll call. And are we going to have the public comments first or comments from the applicants?
Typically, we do citizens wishing to address the board prior to the business on the agenda.
We can set that up any way we want. We can, we can do whatever we want. I would stick with the normal format unless there's some reason not to.
I like the comments prior to because then we'll have a very good idea of how much time we're going to be able to question the applicants. If we have specific, which I will have, I'll try to come to a bare minimum, but I'm going to have specific questions for what was put on their resumes. I've read through every one of them, highlighted some. There's a couple. And I've already, they're not on my shortlist for what's on their resume. But that's my own opinion.
So you're in agreement with doing it in the normal course as we usually do?
Yes. Well, I want a special meeting outside of our six.
We're having the four o'clock. It's going to start at four. We'll have two hours to do that. If it went long, we could bump our other meeting back a bit.
And then we can schedule potentially Friday or something prior to the 28th, see how the two hours go and see if we can narrow it down within that two hours.
Is everybody kind of in agreement? Any disagreement with that or further comments on it?
Four o'clock on Thursday, the 18th.
Yep.
That works for me.
Joy, I didn't mean to cut you off. Joy, is there any other thoughts you had that we're missing here? I really didn't mean to.
Nope, I'm good.
You're good? Okay, all right. Then that's what we're going to do. So we receive and file these now, right? That's, it's now been closed. That's the official list. We don't have to take any particular action on that because we've received them and reviewed them. Or do we need to accept those formally as the list? Carrie, what would you suggest?
You can, you can formally accept them.
Someone want to make a motion to accept the list?
If I could, I got.
Go ahead, Dave. I'm sorry, go ahead. Any further comments?
You mentioned that we should call each one of the applicants. I think the burden should be on them to call us. I've already had a few of them already call me. If they want this position, I think they should contact commissioners themselves.
Actually, Dave, what I said was I intended to call them, not they call me. You can not call them or call them or do whatever. But I just, I didn't, didn't mean to tell you to do something you didn't want to do.
All right.
All right, that's okay. Any other comments or questions or? All right. So we need a motion to receive and file.
I'll make a motion to receive and file District Five candidate information.
Thank you, David.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion, comments, et cetera? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That process is now done. One other, just any other miscellaneous that's not on there? Any other miscellaneous things relating to this? Because I had one thing I wanted to talk about. Anyone else have any other miscellaneous part of that?
I got one.
Okay, go ahead, Dave.
I think it's a shame that we're, if that's the right word, you can use numerous adjectives on, in regards to this, but the commissioner that represented District Five put us in a position that we should not have been put in. Because the voters of District Five no longer get a say-so. It's the other six districts that get to fill that seat. And the voters for that district, other than contacting us personally, they really have no say-so in this. We get to make that decision. So I think we need to, whoever that person is, hopefully some consideration is that they're going to represent District Five in addition to where potentially we want to go with our own districts and get somebody to fill that seat.
Carrie, the only thing I wanted to ask is there's two items that you handed out. One was the County Commission Act Sections 12 and 13, which is the statute on the filling of vacancies and special elections. And the other piece was something out of, it looks like out of the MSU book on county legislation. And it's two pages covering conflicts of interest with some references to some statutory references and Attorney General opinions. Can you make that available on the internet so people, the candidates see these? Because that's the other thing is we'll need to have a corporation counsel or someone has vetted each of these people to see if they have any of these conflicts of interest, school board memberships, contracts with the county. I know one person on this is a part-time employee of the county that said they would, if it was a conflict, they would give up that part-time employment. We have a township supervisor who couldn't hold both positions. Ms. Kelsey's here. He's well aware of that. I did speak with him about that as well. Is there some way to make that, you know, put that out on the internet so you can find it?
Yeah, we can, we can add that to the agenda packet. The candidates for their eligibility are vetted through the county clerk's office.
Okay. And Angie, you've, you've, all these people on here on the list, you've indicated they are eligible for consideration?
Well, for registration.
For registration, but the other piece of it, the conflicts, we wouldn't have looked at that.
I've looked at some of them with Gary Fletcher.
Okay. All right. So you guys are looking at that. And we'll, we'll sort through that further. So that is the list. And Carrie, thank you for providing that. It's very helpful. I appreciate you, you've provided those two documents. Any other matters, comments, questions, concerns?
Yes. Just so that we're clear, and Carrie, maybe you can provide some direction on this. We're appointing for the remainder of the term until the next general election. So the person that is appointed is only appointed through essentially the end of next year. They would have to rerun for the seat. That next November, this position is back on the ballot for that district.
That's correct. Whoever is appointed is not appointed for the remainder of the four-year term. They are appointed just until the next general election in November. So next November, they will have to, if they would like to keep the seat, there will be another election. They will be required to run.
And I did cover that with Gary Fletcher earlier. Initially, I thought it was a, one part of the statute says Phil's the unserved term, but the other part, if you read carefully, says exactly that, that they'd have to go through that whole process. So there'll be, you know, a Democrat, Republican could put in. There'll be a standard election. You'll have that whole, maybe a primary, all those things during the election year. That's something they'd have to be faced with. It's not a applying for the continuation of a four-year term. It's just for until next year and there'd be a fall election and they'd have to go.
It's 14 months versus three years.
14 months. But the election process, as you know, starts, you know, January, February. People started looking around and, you know, getting their act together, so to speak. So, you know, or not in some cases. Anyway, any other questions, comments? Thank you for that. Dave, go ahead.
I went through all these and highlighted the ones, but I see three potential candidates. Of course, Rob Muniz Kelsey is here. He is well aware that being a sitting township supervisor, he would have to resign once he, if he gets, not once, but if he does get appointed to that seat, he would have to resign. And he wouldn't resign until he got the vote. And there's one other one that you mentioned, the employee, but there's another one in here, too. If you please go through it and look. They're currently sitting on a sitting board.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? We have one other agenda item, which is an adjournment. If we could have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. We are adjourned.